Okay, I think, I'm sorry for the delay. We have problems with what made this leg, uh, my leg and some more. Uh, if everyone stands at this time. Uh, we will, um, have our prayer. Mr. Felton is going to listen on education.
Thank you for being able to gather in this building today in such a beautiful day after all the wet weather we had last week and just ask that you will help us all to listen today and to discern what we hear and to make good decisions and make the best decisions that will benefit the majority of the whole of Gates County. Ask this in your name. Amen.
I go first. First, our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the four commissioners meeting February 8th, 2016, to order. Our first item of business is approval of our minutes for January 6th, 2016, and January 20th, 2016. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
I'm kind of, uh, there's two type of rapids that you can make plans to talk to. First, I'll take the initial form. The first paragraph.
Excuse me, sir. Uh, what number do you have up? Okay, and then I told you that's in the second set up.
The first paragraph, which says medical transport, the sum we need to leave done. Also, if we go down to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, the eighth paragraph, where it says in the second sentence, by having that designation, the county, it cuts, so it keeps. Also, we want to correct, uh, the next sentence to change effective to effective. Amen. And then the last, effective, we put if instead of given.
Also, in that same sentence, uh, there's an only in there twice that means the second, we are the only magnitude of the surrounding. Okay, any other corrections? Here none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Absolutely.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Matters we need to add, a couple items to the agenda today. Under the Knights delegations, we need to add Helen York, what we call Connect North Carolina, and Luann Gillum for Habitat for Humanity. And then going down to row number eight on the new business, we need to add a number 11 for a Connect North Carolina resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as corrected or amended?
Absolutely.
Okay, a motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, moving on to the, um, four item delegations, uh, Knights delegations. Has anyone signed up? Mr. Reiner.
Jack, you got anything you want to say?
We'll keep that private.
I came back by huffle of the man. I hesitated back in September 214. I said that it had a verse, I guess the word anniversary, of the devil Johnny Hoare that I was every September I was remembering. And I told y'all and Jack that I wasn't coming back. Some of y'all actually called me up and told me they appreciate me coming. I couldn't believe it. I still don't believe it, but I noticed how this politics started to be nicely. But I did want at this time, Ben, to do remember the fact, and I've been thinking a lot about Johnny Hoare, of what's going on in the county right now, especially with the school, the man who requests of the school board people telling us that we need a new school, a $15 million school. And I wouldn't even have to be here today, if Johnny would have set up and done all the numbers, fallen and been in here. But I got three things I want to talk about. I'm going to talk about two of them first, and then I'm going to reserve the right to come back at the end of the meeting to talk about the other one, Jack. But again, each one of y'all, numbers is something that unless you're blind, you need to see. All the other hearing numbers, we don't comprehend. But, you know, the schools board, the school system, I understand politics, I think, and all y'all didn't do in the end. But every department, every group, the sheriff's department, the schools, everybody fights at budget time, and budget time seems like to me is all the time. You just jump from one year to the other. But it's their responsibility to get as much money as they can. And everybody else in here that represents some department wants their money. So everybody fights for money. One thing I have noticed about the Board of Education and the administration in the school has been over the last few years, coming up with some exorbitant issues that they present to the commissioners that are completely unrealistic. And I sit there and I listen to them, and maybe that's the way they did things in Colorado, but it's not usually the way we've done things here in Gates County. Uh, over the years, the Board of Education, the superintendent will go meet with the county manager, they will sit down and decide what they had to have and what they didn't have to have and work it out. But the figures that we have to all y'all, and I want to make sure that the public understands this, that they come in and say they want to build, have to build, a $15 million school. And I know for a fact that what the school system has been doing is trying to educate the public that it has to be done. They've gone to PTA meetings, and I've had people come to me and said, well, they told us at the PTA meeting, you know, but here's the bottom line to the commissioners and to the public. These figures for a $15 million school would be raising our tax rate 15 cents. Well, that sounds like a lot, but when you do the percentages on it, that would mean in order to build a $15 million school, Tom, you going off? It isn't like the Tom, oh, he's all right. But anyway, literally, percentage wise, in order to build a $15 million school, we'd have to raise taxes 23.44 percent, 20, over 23 percent. Now, all y'all know that that can't happen. So my presentation, part of it to commissioners, just to service that debt, the service of 15 year only 4% interest costs us $1,349 million a year. Y'all have the figures I have up here, but over 1.3 million, that's the service that 15 year debt. That's where I get the 23.44 percent from. That's how much act, you know? So somewhere down the line, we got to convince, or you have to convince, the Board of Education and the superintendent, this won't flood. Now, my suggestion that y'all would be this, and being someone, I should say y'all, because I don't know what else to say than the anger's in here, but, um, go next month, or next week when you meet and lay it on the table. Uh, say, you know, this is not going to flood. Now, the problem that we have with the school, I don't know how it happened. I don't know who's the blame. The commissioners were not giving enough money, not proper maintenance at the school, and Billy Felton served this speech, and you're going to hear it one more time, Billy. But, you know, I told some of you, I've lived in my house for 48 years. In that first down, I put two moves on it. I put a heating and air conditioning system, redone the whole thing, cost more than my house did. I put a new drainage field in my second tank. So over 48 years, every time something went wrong, I repaired it. If I hadn't have done that, the house would have fell down. So I don't know why we haven't kept this school up to standards by doing maintenance, and that the school hasn't been torn down. But a quick tricky question is, do y'all know when the Empire State Building was built? Uh, it went into business in 1931, and it's still there. And if you go to New York, you still see it. They hadn't tore down because they said that the plumbing was outdated or the computers didn't work. It's still there. So I think that we need to look at somebody, youth commissioners and the citizens have got to understand, first of all, we cannot have a 15 cent tax increase. I mean, this won't float, you know that. I mean, I could get on the phone today and stir up the hornets nest for calling certain people who talk all over the county, you know, network. Say, hey, you know, the commissioners may regulate taxes. Y'all aren't going to do that. But anyway, bottom line to this presentation is this, that's the figure, you have them in front of you, you know we got to, if we got to do something with the school, somebody come up with an answer that will work. But the public often know and does know that we can't build a $15 million school. Hurry. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. For your presentation. Okay, I see I don't want to, no. Okay, so the Knights one, Count York.
Thank you, Chairman, President, the Lord, County Manager. You all should have received with your packet of information, the Connect NC publications that have been put together, North Carolina State, along with North Carolina Department of City, and our state parks, community colleges, and other stakeholders are working together to educate the public about the individual debt, bond referendum, which will be on the ballot on March 15th, and what it means for our local areas. Um, I think I, I think I gave you all one of everything. Um, I do have extra copies available for anybody that's interested, um, out here. In, in this particular brochure, there is a list inside of the universities, the money that's being allocated, the community colleges, the state parks, including our personal mill pond, which would be receiving $875,000 if this bond were passed in March. Do you all have any questions about the information? I'd be glad to answer what I can. Um, it is just educational information so that people know it's on the ballot and what it includes and what it means for our local areas.
Well, I see in here, new construction, repairs, renovations over on the left side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm curious, were, were these numbers submitted and made out of this information?
I, I do not know, um, how this.
I didn't know if it's divided based on the size of the county or whether, um, each county sent in projects.
That is the assumption I.
Well, I, and I'll point to the county's.
Right.
Um, I think community college system came up, some of the, you know, asked their institutions underlay what they need, their wish list, whatever.
I don't know, um, College of the Albemarle is, there's one figure listed, but they have, I think, four campuses in the seventh county area, um, and all of that is written under there. Um, also, I know that under the University of North Carolina systems, Los Angeles City State University is not broken out separately, but there is money in that various, um, allocation. Uh, they are receiving, I think, about 14 million for project there. Um, so, uh, for the bond is also proceeding, would receive should the bond pass March.
As you go in, uh, you know, as I look at this information, I recognize we're trying to educate our citizens, our public on this being on the ballot. Uh, and also, it appears that we also want to advocate the support of.
No, sir. That is not my purpose being here today.
Okay. Uh, and noticing, like you said, it would benefit the, uh, much as Mill Pond as well as, uh, community colleges. But the thing that, uh, I didn't get an answer to, I guess I'm not financially savvy enough right now to know this, but if there's no tax increase, um, but eventually, whoever buys a bond, we know that they're going to be paying interest, you know, there's going to be, uh, some type of benefit for those purchase bonds. But at some point in time, the bond will come due. Uh, somewhere in the budget, you're going to have to budget additional funds to pay that bond. So, uh, while there may not be a tax increase, it could be a potential effect, uh, you know, depending on how the state handles their funds, uh, that could affect the citizens. We will benefit some from this, our community colleges, our public schools will not benefit from it, uh, from what I've seen. Uh, so, you know, as, as an advocate for it, I guess we're not advocating, we're just maybe.
Just making you aware.
The information.
Want to look at it, sir.
Okay, all right, sir. Uh, hopefully it is out there and everyone is aware, and they'll need to make their own decision, uh, based on what they think will benefit some.
Helen, I will say, I would say just on the surface, it's not factual, but, um, the total amount is $2 billion. I would think that hopefully to address Mr. Jordan's question, that, that $2 billion won't all come in at one time into the state's coffers.
And we.
As those bond, as those bonds are sold, they'll invest those dollars, and that would be one way that they would pay interest on those, on those bonds. And it might be a, it might be a bond, I don't know the nature of, it could be a bond that doesn't have an interest payment for three years or five years or something. It might be a stipulation in there. So that might be part of the answer to it. Don't have that, don't have that here, a fact, but I would think that would make sense.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Okay, Lu and Gillum, Habitat for Humanity.
Chairman, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. I come today on behalf of Hertford County Habitat for Humanity, along with my friends and board colleagues, Reverend James Hutchinson and Mr. Dennis Deloche. Um, we serve together as an all volunteer board with Hertford County Habitat, and our restor in Murkiesboro is run all by volunteers. So we appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. I come today to tell you about the opportunity that has been presented to us with Habitat for Humanity, North Carolina, and the SC, SECU Foundation. They, um, in 2015, the entities have challenged, uh, have created the challenge that there would be a Habitat home in every county of North Carolina. 100 Habitat homes built in the next three years. Habitat affiliates across the state will find prospective homeowners, volunteers, and donors to build affordable homes across our state. Habitat homes are not free to owners. They have mortgages, but with volunteer help and donations, the cost of a decent affordable home, um, is offered. And Habitat offers the mortgage at 0% interest. With the SECU challenge, the foundation, after a home is built and the keys are handed over to the homeowner, the, the SECU foundation will purchase that mortgage and manage it. Thus, it will free up Habitat affiliates to build the next home. Habitat, North Carolina, asks us to help build a home in Gates County to help meet this challenge. Today, we come making you aware of this opportunity, and would you, we would like for you to partner with us in this endeavor. For our next steps, will you help us find prospective applicants, donors, volunteers, suggestions for land? Help us coordinate an information session to the Gates County residents and prospective homeowners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you, and happy to entertain questions, and also my colleagues may be able to help answer questions about building and, and how, how else you can help us.
Well, I am familiar with Habitat for Humanity. I worked on a project at Greendale, um, women on missions, built a home in Greendale, North Carolina, women on mission. Um, and the owner of the home, or the prospective owner, they had to devote volunteers many hours, they had to be outside helping to build their home. Um, and it's, it was a very heartwarming, um, experience, um, and to see them out there working and, I mean, but at the moment, we built that home in Greendale and it's still standing. So, and it was, it was a nice, uh, it was a nice home. Uh, and just so you should watch your candid, if you did, people volunteer and you can take part.
Absolutely.
I too, Chairman, very proud of Habitat, Lake County, Raleigh, New York. Let's see, that's a useful initiative.
Yes, we're, we're really pleased, um, that we get to be a part of this, and it will, um, help us. We were going, we're going to build in Hertford County this year, um, and then would like to build here in Gates as soon as, we'll probably need to actually build in tandem to try to meet those requirements with the challenge.
How did y'all select, uh, how are you going to select the person in Hertford County?
Um, in Hertford County, uh, what we did this year is we had an information session and, um, presented what it means to be a Habitat homeowner, uh, to be, we call those folks family partners, and how can we partner with you. So we had an information session. Uh, in your handouts, uh, there are the slides that, it gives a good overview to prospective families as well as just general information for people to know about Habitat. Um, from those, uh, information sessions and also passing out applications, we receive applications, um, make sure that families have meet the criteria. Uh, you cannot, your income range has to be in a certain range. We have one, um, in our handout for Hertford County. Gates County will be a little bit, um, different, but pretty much similar. Make sure that they have to turn in proper documents, um, demonstrate need, but also demonstrate that they can afford to make payments as well as other, um, payments such as electric bills and, um, they will be, homeowners and so they will create property tax, so, um, but we assist them through this. We have a committee called the Family Nurture Committee that works with families along the way as we're building their home.
I was very, uh, glad to see this. I'm involved with the Gates County Housing Committee, and, uh, we certainly, we, one of our missions is to try to improve the housing quality of citizens in the county. Uh, those who qualify. And certainly, we're, we won't have a problem getting some advocates for you.
Okay, that would be awesome. That was excellent.
I think the problem is going to be a traffic side, we're going to use or, okay? But my question is, uh, as we talk to the, the applicants, uh, you have a guideline here on page six, uh, for the, not the income guidelines, uh, for a two member household, the minimum income is $12,200, maximum $32,500. Now, yeah, in order to get someone to qualify, uh, so there's some other things as well as income, you know, there were one is participating, uh, educational, uh, aspects of it. But if the income changes, and that's kind of possible, to go in this year and in the range, but all of a sudden, where do we stand on that?
Um, I, I think where we are at the application process, if they win the lottery, then we will not fill them a hair, but, um, we will go with the process of where we are, and that is a sticking situation. Right now, our, our applicant is right on the top of the range, a single mother, she has a steady job and two children, um, but needs a hand up. So, um, so she was right on the, so we've had those discussions. I don't know, have we had that happen before where someone's income has, has changed drastically? So, um, I guess that would, we probably also have, we do have alternates in our process, or maybe the next person in line for Habitat home.
Well, I was beginning to, I mean, I started to go through the process.
Right.
Uh, the homes are built, but now you are servicing the loan.
Right.
And, you know, the income could change five years down the road, so that doesn't affect the, 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 not some homes.
No, and, oh, I'm sorry, I was a little confused. Um, so, um, yes, and the nice thing is, right now, all, um, all the homes that Habitat in Hertford County has built, we manage the mortgage. But with this, the state employees credit union will manage the mortgage. So, once the, that is done, then they are responsible. Even though we want to keep up with our family partners and encourage them and help them, um, educate them and keep them in the loop, because there may be other things that they need, um, in the process.
On the same page, please, just for clarification, because, um, we don't want to know this, we're making recommendations to household size, it says two.
Oh, um, if the household size is two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight, we, we look at it based on the, the families.
I understand that, but there's not one, but.
Oh, why?
It would be very bad.
Why? Um, do you want to speak to that?
No.
Okay. Um, we do give priorities, uh, to, to families, um, especially with children. So, um, we would consider all applicants and then look, but these are the guidelines that have been set forth by Habitat in North Carolina.
So if, uh, so we, what we don't want to do is get someone excited.
Right, right.
And because, uh, in the project that Mr. Jordan referred to, um, most of the homes that people we've helped have been elderly, an elderly person.
Right, right.
So are they exempt, and if they are, I know you have your rules, we just need to know.
Um, but they got more on this project too, so it's, yeah.
Probably, probably what, what would be good is when you have met somebody, like a family that you would think would be a good prospective homeowner, um, and we would love for us to partner together with that to help what Habitat recommends as well as what you all are recommending. Um, but, um, but yes, it's, that is usually not the fact, it's usually more on, um, working with families.
Okay. And, uh, I noticed in here also, you could get a family that if someone in the household is not able, you know, you could get, uh, a grandson, you know, make those hours up.
Yeah, and it, and it would be, you know, a grandmother raising children, or, you know, something along those lines. I guess we just have to take applications and, um, sort through them, sort of triage. There's more people that we want to help than we're able to, but we'd like to be one family, um, and to, uh.
And what Mr. Jordan said, once you just said the two come together, that there'd be more than one applicant, who is it makes the final decision as which applicant is selected?
Um, how it works, um, on our board is that Hertford County Habitat Family Nurture Committee makes the recommendation and the board approves. This is new to us, um, because you all are partners, so we, we would need to figure out what the Family Nurture Committee would look like in the absence of you all having a, an affiliate. So we would probably need to just hammer out that process of, because we would want Gates County input as well. And then I speak for myself, um, I could, you know, we can hammer this out with the board and, and you all as well.
So, so how many houses have we built in the last eight years?
Well, the C D G, probably, we, we built, uh, maybe five, six, eight.
I don't know, because quite a few were built before I was here.
I would say six.
Six, seven.
That's a sort of grand process.
That's a five.
So we're there with, dealing with that type of thing.
That's wonderful. We, we would love your expertise and help.
And a housing committee probably has repaired, rehabilitated, probably over 40, closer 50 homes.
And a housing committee probably has repaired, rehabilitated probably over forty, closer to fifty homes in the last about four, five years.
And we could rehab a home that, our last home that we did was a foreclosure that we rehabbed. So that is a possibility as well. We would just want to work with the Habitat North Carolina guidelines on this project. We have flexibility, but we, more when we're autonomous of this, but with Habitat North Carolina, we would follow our guidelines.
Okay, well, thank you and hopefully we can work at I so we can take part in this program.
Right.
Just want to let, once we get the applicant in this committee and then make sure you all can.
Yeah, actually, I guess, I guess today we want your blessing and want to make an awareness opportunity. And also my colleague, Mr. Rollick, would like to speak to some ways that you could help us to make it an affordable opportunity.
As Chair of County Missions, if I were resident here in Gates County, or if I were a member of the county commission, the first thing I would want to know is why does Hurford County have that format kind of ask for you all for some sort of consideration? Let me make it real so that everybody knows. I've been a member of the Habitat affiliate Hurford County for about eighteen, nineteen years. I think all of you know that you have a state employees credit union here in Gates County. That state employees credit union has a foundation, that foundation was located in Raleigh. That foundation has decided to find enough houses to be built, one in each county in the state of North Carolina. Gates County has no Habitat format. So when the issue came to us, we said we were going to build one in Hurford County. But since Gates County has no affiliate, we will be willing to try to build one in Gates County. That's why we're here. Okay, so it's clear. We consider you all brothers and sisters, so we want to teach you and try to help. The other thing you might want to know, just to give some feedback, you are familiar with the state employees credit union? And that they give a five to ten thousand dollar scholarship to one graduating senior near a high school in the state. That started around 2003, I believe. I am a member of that, not a member, but a force in that organization. You're familiar with a hotspot, Hurford County having a teacher housing complex for teachers. I was the one that got that done in Hurford County. We know about what the foundation is doing. We know of the gesture and the things that they're trying to do across the state for various number of people. Not just school systems, not just habitat, a number of organizations that they give to. So this is what this is all about. They're trying to do something for the good of the people in North Carolina. And when they decided to work with the partnership with the state Habitat organization, it filtered down in the sense of trying to build a house in Hurford County. Now, let me talk about our organization and how we do it. I am in personal thing that the guidelines would fall under the guidelines that we have already existed. We're not about creating the guidelines for this, for this big project. We are collaborative and we're gladly entertained and provide any kind of support and anything that you all want to suggest. But I have to work with you all, if you want somebody to work on committee with us, that's fine. We would love to have that. But what we want to do is to build a house here in Gates County. We want to build for someone who is in need of a house, someone who can't afford a house, to go to the bank, pay a $10,000 down payment, buy a piece of land, get a long-term debt, get five, six percent interest. Pay a six, eight hundred dollar a month payment if they can't afford it. Our payments, once we complete the house, the new house, land or the house on, pays about two fifty, three hundred dollars a month. That's what we're bringing in. It is, if you look at the history of the Habitat organization, they are talking about building houses for families. That's what the individual, your question, that's it. It is not individuals. It is for family members. Could be a man or a wife, could be a wife with children, but family members. So we're here because of that. So the reason I say that to you is because we do need you to support or to ask you for something. The question comes to my mind, what can you all do for us to help us build this house here in Gates County? It's not to help us in Hurford County, okay, it's to help us build this house here in Gates County. Well, I might suggest, as for building a house, we follow the same procedures as any other individual who's built a house. We have to go through the county proper procedures. We have to file codes and all these kind of things. This is a thing that I thought about that might be of interest to you. Within your house, you have a right to waive certain things. What would help us, if you could waive the building permits, fee for the building permits, the fee for the second permit, or things of that nature. That's about what we can do mostly to help us. If there are any volunteers available that you know of, any people that would love to support this project, we would like for you to bring that dish up and to help us with the volunteers. We build this house making volunteers. If there are no volunteers, it's very difficult to build a house. It usually takes, so how long have you been a house change?
About a year.
About a year. Why? Because we build it basically with volunteers. You know, volunteers, and you don't have to be skilled, you don't have to be skilled. We have some skilled people that are coming in, but volunteers have this pain, they have this assist, they have the insulation, they have the L M, they have whatever it takes. But when it comes to those specialized things, we have certified people, people licensed to help us with that, okay? But they have those people as well. So that's probably one of the things that I'm thinking that we might need for you all. That's one of the things I think that we would probably ask you all to do, and that would help us with that, volunteering, help us with positive looking a lot. I've looked at prices already, we know what prices are. We may not be able to afford a $20,000 lot, I can assure you that. Because we're trying to buy a $20,000 lot and we won't have funds when we need to build a house. So we might need some publicity in that. And probably to help us with waiving the fees, if you could do that, then your church district, I think, that would help us a lot.
I'm looking in the process of building a house in Hurford County now. What, do you have any feel for a time frame that you're sticking up in Gates County?
We've got to start in October. And it may be going along with the one we got now, but we got to start in October this year. So we got to get everything done to get it started in October.
So we have guidelines that we have to follow within the state's guidelines as well.
Are you soliciting the churches also and churches in Gates County or where?
Yeah, I put a sample letter in the top of the packet, wanted you all to have it first. But then I have my card and my email, and then if you have churches you know that would like to partner with us, please email me. And please email me with any partners and we can put them on our list to send out this initial letter and go from there. And if you have suggestions for a letter, feedback of how we can make it more accessible for Gates County, please, please update that.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Loach, do you have three house plans that you, that you use? We have a number of house plans. We have certain house plans that are recommended. Of course, we're not going to build a castle, I think we all know that, or within certain sizes, I think it's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, fourteen, clearly.
We usually try to do it based on the families selected.
Yeah.
So at least a three bedroom, but we can build a five bedroom.
But that's number.
Yeah, we got to hold this house, the foundation's up to a hundred thousand. So we got to hold it under that table.
What size house are we talking about? It's quite big.
Around twelve, twelve hundred, usually, a three bedroom.
The ones that I've made would be quite different. So we will be asking for something, and as Lynn said, once we get to the point where we need volunteers, we definitely ask you all for a lot of church leaders or somebody that might want to help us. Because we can't come in and build a house alone, we really can't do that. We need support from you guys, so, okay?
I think we have, thank you. We have a place provisions to waive building permits for the housing committee and various other organizations. I think we do have, already have that in place, so that's, that's all we can, something we could address.
I knew that's why, that's why I said that. I didn't ask you anything you couldn't do.
So, thank you.
Okay, so for a question on our blessing and then to maybe assign someone to meet with you to go through what's the next step and all that.
Absolutely. And any recommendations you have?
Do we need to?
No, Chairman, you need a motion. I'm sure I'm a four of us, easily get one.
Well, I would like a motion.
And Chairman, I would make a motion that we embrace and support Habitat for Humanity project. And in that motion, I would like instruct the county manager to consider a contact person to work with this on later.
Okay, the motion has been made. Right, Mr. Horns, I'm going to have a second?
Yes, ma'am, I'll say it then, Mr. President.
End of discussion?
I would, I'm thinking that we might want to include the housing committee in the process. County manager in seeking someone to provide support for this or participation. That gives the housing committee, see who's available there.
You mean in addition to another person, since the motion was for a contact, for me to identify a contact person?
Right, a contact person through the housing committee or someone else if they're not available. I think, you know, you're going to need to duplicate the process somewhat, I think, if we just exclude the housing committee. But I think that could be, now, I think, up here, Mr. Jordan, I think the motion and the second would be okay. I would take that as a recommendation.
And if you see anything, bring it back to us. Sound okay?
Okay, a motion has been made and properly signed that we instruct that county manager to contact person and then begin discussions with Habitat managing in the Hurford County. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those. Well, we look forward to working with you and we look forward to having someone have you there.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you all with your cameras.
I would be like. Okay, we're moving on to number five, administrative reports. First one is the county manager.
This is December fifteenth through January fifteenth. Two associates from W J E Incorporated inspected at historic courthouse January the sixth and are still waiting a final written report for the latest inspection. On January the twelfth, President Milpon and Park Advisory Committee met to discuss events at Murgis Milpon. And overview programs in October to December were provided. Attendees were encouraged to learn about the N C Connect Bond Reprandment, which it passed would allow expansion of campsites at Milpon. Two thousand sixteen is the one hundredth anniversary of the Milpon Park System. On January the twenty seventh, Milpon will be at the late for the viewing of the P B X special, Saving the Best, the special air at eight P M. At one P M on Sunday, February the sixth, will be a short one hundred years of state parks presentation followed by smores and registrations required. Milpon Day is set for Saturday, April the thirtieth. The Tri-County Animal Shelter also met on January the twelfth to discuss shelter operations. Adoption policies will be discussed at a later meeting. Proposed phase one edition is estimated to cost $100,000. This will consist of the two pods from the sheriff's office and one cement building, all of which will be used for cats. Approximately $44,000 in private donations has been raised to assist with this expense. Animal shelter staff anticipate requesting $20,000 additional monies from each county to cover the remaining expense for phase one in the upcoming budget. The low-income stay into program will continue for now without grant funding. Do you have any questions?
Always interesting.
How much should we request this year?
I do not have that. Would be right, well, it's in the finance report. I have to find that. It's on the top of my head, far from rushed. Okay, thank you. Any other idea of? Okay, moving on to finance and tax.
And I wonder if I have a chance to review the letter report and the tax department report. You can see we are approaching the numbers that we had last year in terms of the election, so we're pleased about that. We are sending out second notice of delinquent letters by this Wednesday to encourage those citizens who have not yet paid to make their payments. Before we begin that advertising process. Any questions on the what number four?
I see no activity with Ellis.
That is correct, and I have emailed as well as attempted phone calls, you know, with no response to that.
But we see a lot, it's like he is, we have to prove some of that.
Yeah, that is true. That is, that is a good plus. That was a good move, I think, for the county certainly years ago, Zacchaeus.
I believe you have some refunds?
Yes, ma'am. The first one, which is an overpayment in the form of the taxpayer transcribed check. Now, I would say you do not have a copy of that actual check that we received, but it was transcribed by the taxpayer submitting that payment. So in the amount of refund of $180.
Okay, I guess we'll take this one on the chat. I mean, this one's firm because, oh, I think we can do the math.
So, just hang on.
Okay, do I have, entertain a motion to refund the taxpayer for the overpayment of $180?
So, move it to, second.
Motion for the debate and public stuff, end of discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We could on, the second is kind of the cumulative refund with Core Labyrinth, some law funds, the Red, State of the Union. That total amount is referenced and there is a cumulative refund. The second, we get, we do every year, we will submit this payment, so you see that reference. We did, I have a spreadsheet for you, so you can see where the refunds are going back to.
And that was very helpful. And just to kind of let you know, it's where mortgage companies have it in Astro and Paya and then the taxpayer pays it for a variety of reasons where it's not.
Yeah, we did it for.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to do the collective cumulative refunds in the last six thousand, six hundred and five dollars and eighty-four cents.
So, move it.
Motion's been made, second.
Second.
Second. End of discussion? I thought you did a nice job, not only did you give us a cumulative list, but then you went back through your records and showed us.
That is helpful to see, yes. And thanks for a good, thank Collective Lord Chavers for having all those notes. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those. Okay, those are approved.
And Chairman, I would like to state for the public here, it says on our report, tax collections for the month is $1,112,499. four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents. I see some pens, I'll say that again. Read them. One million, one hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Yeah, and I usually tail my end comment, thank you to the staff, Betty, Lori and Shelley, but it is always, you know, they, near the maintenance of the office and what a great group, so, uh, good to them and, and the good work.
Has a software edition, then.
Good. Well, put the flags back up.
The flag is gonna get better.
Uh, what a challenge, yeah, there were some emails in your direction before you received the collective report to elaborate, if you will, um, on the goings on. I was away in class and, um, Friday, last Friday was pretty close out there. Um, and Lori spent an enormous amount of time on the phone waiting for some response from the Keystone, of which we did not get until we approached the Thursday morning hour, you know, much later, so, um, the issue remained, um, you know, just trying to forge ahead and, um, we did, there were a couple of emails from Vice President Michael Jura on the issue, um, you know, they, they don't seem as concerned as we might have anything, but, but, you know, the Mayoral Report is critical as we know, we want to see that right, it's difficult to afford with those issues, you know, we have that, so, it's been interesting, I'll just say for that, but, you know, it's issues remaining and really not resolved, so.
Mr. Lawrence has a question.
Rebound, it's coming up, we're always to, uh, we have a plan in place to alert the public that's coming.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, probably newspaperly required, I'm sure.
That's right, some website as well, I was gonna, Melissa's, um, several, um, weeks ago, I counted Melissa her out, we'll do some designs and get that on the website, probably in the paper. Uh, the vehicle identification will be, you know, sent to the sheriff, uh, these vehicles out there, um, the, I'll say late evenings, um, at the office, you know, building printing out cars or routing work for the next day, we'll have those identified, um, all the vehicles involved will be labeled with magnetic labels, we anticipate you're by having a badge so they're easily identified. Unfortunately, we're in a society now where, um, it behooves us really to, to kind of put the words we like to have on your door and you're not used to it on a Thursday morning, it, it's, you know, it's, it's kind of spreading the word and letting the public know we'll be out there, you know, uh, 'cause we do envision a walk around with all the properties with a new image, if you will, of all the buildings and commercials or, uh, the dwellings and things of that nature, so. We plan to get word out there, there will be no surprises, I think that ad will serve the purpose of running for at least a couple times just to get it out there, to let them know, hey, this is, this is what we're gonna do. Last reval, we had a pamphlet that was incorporated with the taxpayer, we, we printed those up, you know, at the county's expense, uh, effective, uh, let people know we'll be out, what is a reevaluation, what this is process entails, so, but you're right, we're gonna get word out there, I've already notified sheriff of some of those vehicles that, uh, what they can anticipate and the main law and the license number, so let them know we'll, we'll be out.
I have a question on the tax collection report. Uh, on the prior year percentage. Uh, we got eighty-four point three-six and eighty-four point six-two, then we have two point ten and twenty point sixty-nine, and then they have the, the average eighty-two ninety-five and eighty-two ninety-seven, I didn't put a calculator on that, but it just looked a little strange to me that we did two point ten percent. Is that?
Wrong, that's, on the motor vehicle portion in and of itself, which, um, oddly enough, some of those older builds, as we target, we are no longer obviously going for B and B, so that is, that's tapering off, um, finally for us, so, that's for the radical percentage gap, if you will, um, only those older builds were made up until two thousand and five and the, what, thirteen was the last year of actual building for those motor vehicles.
So that would affect the network?
That is correct, yes, sir, yeah, pretty soon that, that will dwindle down to, I won't say no, but it'll, it'll be very minimal as we approach, only those older builds, which they're very difficult to collect, um, I wish there was some way that, um, you know, one can enforce, uh, before getting your tags on a new vehicle, you would, you would be, uh, resolved to pay those older delinquent taxes when we can, but, uh, but anyway, we, we do what we can with that, we have to be creative with the motor vehicles.
And the other thing is, at the last meeting, we talked about the, uh, fire piece.
Yes, sir.
And I got an email where we came up with an ordinance regulating the assessment of the lack of fire protection piece in B and C, I thought that was, uh, a very good, uh...
Well, I want to thank, come to board Melissa Lawrence for good work, she, she located much of what you received in that email, she was, she was hands-on getting ours, and then she did find that was actually in place from two thousand, so that was, um, detailing the amounts as well as the, uh, some of the criteria. Uh, one thing Melissa also noted, and I think County Manager and I touched on this as well, you don't see any, uh, points on vacant land that's not addressed in the synopsis, so, you know, I know we had some that you folks actually refunded of vacant land that we were charging five figures on, so, um, that language does not incorporate any of the vacant land, simply dwellings, so, hold on, it was helpful there, Mr. Jordan.
And also, any residential dwellings or commercial facilities served by a public utility, uh, will be subject, um, to a fire plate. Now, does that mean that if you have no utility, I'd say if you've got a building, uh, I made another one, if a residential building or commercial facility is not served by a public facility, uh, and I think that's something that, you know, we may want to clarify, is that something that we still charge a fire plate?
Well, according to that section six point one, I believe County Manager and I, also, um, this was revealed by any residential dwelling in state is served by, served by a public utility, so I would think not, I think if I went out to a dwelling, um, and the structure was still standing and there was no service to that, I think, you know, based on this, there would be no need to reach that fire plate. However, if there's any, you know, is the water gone, is the power turned off, those kinds of things, but...
Yeah, I think that kind of puts it a little bit of an awkward position there, because if you've got a home, let's say that, uh, if you go to Florida, turn off all the utilities for six months or eight, forever, uh, in assets, you know, you should charge a fire plate, from what I'm seeing here, so that's something more of a dress. But also, I think, uh, most important thing is that this ordinance should have been available or should be available, just as I was only ordinance, any other ordinance that we have with the county, uh, I don't know, we need to codify this, if we make our regular ordinances, uh, public documents, we want to codify it through it.
It's already been done, that's where Melissa found it, it was in the register of deeds, correct? It's not, but you're in the process of doing that, you have found several ordinances that were passed in the past that were not put in register of deeds, Melissa's taking care of that, and she's taking care of putting it all online.
Right, and I, and we ought to put this on the public seat, all right, I think that was all, yeah, very good work.
No, I, I do want to say, when I, when I think of no public service or that utility, I think of the actual meter being replaced as opposed to somebody going to Florida for four months, I think of something along that nature, that the housing itself has been removed, that's in essence what, what I envision with, you know, that service totally is connected in the case of perhaps an older dwelling or even a single life where that box itself is, is totally gone, that's, that's kind of what I envision.
Because the people at Florida, they cut it, you can cut off the border, but you still pay the minimum fee, uh, I mean, you, uh, and with electricity as well.
Right, yes.
They don't, um, they don't take time or anything.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you for your, thank you for your, um...
Yeah, so thank you, Warren Curry, Sandy Pittman, um, County Manager, on the effort for the revaluation, appreciate everything there's going with the office setup, but I'm just, I really do appreciate that.
This Sunday, I was asked how much did we appropriate for the animal shelter, it was seventy-four thousand five hundred.
And we are in Tri-County, 'cause we had, uh, show on appointments and dates.
I think part of that, I think it was originally fifty, part of that was to make payment for last, so we already appropriated additional money, so I'm less saying it's about fifty thousand, but the current year and the other twenty-five or so was fifty.
So we, we would be able to do that without making any adjustments to the twenty thousand, they requested the twenty thousand?
No, I thought, I would talk about the next fiscal, next fiscal year. Twenty sixteen, seventeen.
The, the twenty-four thousand, that was for installation or loans or anything?
No, 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 that was part of the appropriation for last year, the cross fiscal years, it wasn't a current year. Okay, um, moving on, uh, does anyone need to take a short break, but let's get through the department report. Okay, and the public here in the company, they get that done. Okay, department reports, any, does any of the commissioners have questions, I can read through the department reports, various ones are here. Okay, hearing none, uh, moving on, articles of interest, I did receive a letter acknowledging out of seat, uh, a letter that we wrote for, about emergency crossovers for Highway thirteen concerning Shaw River Bridge, um, D F T, um, the engineer at the district level has passed it on, uh, has ordered to the district engineering staff to review and consideration. So, they did receive that letter and they have kicked the ball up the ladder. Still defending that, um, okay, at this time, if there's no questions for any of the department heads, we will, um, tell...
There is information about the district meeting, but it does not have the date, but it isn't April.
Six.
April six. April six, so we can just remember that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think it's ended.
Okay, um, and April six, and we need to have it registered by that, what does it?
It does not say, but if you let us know perhaps at the next meeting, have alternatives, and we can by that time, well, I can send you the, drop their date so the state can all have the rest.
Sure. So, put that on the calendar for the, um, April sixth on that Wednesday. Okay, at this time, we will move to our public hearing, and I entertain a motion to go to public hearing, I have a running, uh, a sudden request on land on Highway, um, Highway thirty-seven, east of Hardest Road, west of Newberry Road. I have a motion to go to public hearing.
So, move it.
Motion's made, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we will have, uh, we are in a public hearing, uh, recognize Ms. Battey, so, may I introduce her?
Good morning. Um, this request has been brought by Nancy and Mark Sutton, head of Sutton Industries, for to rezone two pieces of property that they currently own. Um, the first parcel is identified as one zero, dash zero zero two four five eight, and the second track is track zero seven, zero 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 nine five. Both track one zero is, currently is on R one, um, and they're seeking to go from R one to I one. Track zero seven is currently is on A one, and they're seeking to go to the Iowa zoning district. This case was brought before the planning board, um, during the, um, December meeting, at which time, the planning board made a recommendation to rezone track zero seven dash zero zero nine five, which is the smaller parcel and is across Hardest Road, um, from the R one zoning district to I one. And, and also at that time, they could not reach a consensus about rezoning the second track, so they tabled that item and heard, reheard it again during the January nineteenth meeting. During the January nineteenth meeting, um, they reached consensus and made a recommendation to, um, rezone that parcel from I one, um, sorry, A one to I one.
Okay, um, thank you, does anyone have any questions for our plan? Okay, is there anyone in the ordinance that wants to speak to the issue? Melissa.
If you don't have...
Yeah, if you don't, well...
I have a handout, um, for you to review, just got some...
This is Madam Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, first of all, it's, uh, both an honor and pleasure to be able to speak with you all this morning, and we really appreciate you taking the time to, um, review our requests of the government. Um, just to give you a brief history of our company, our mill site has been there since in the early nineteen fifties, and maybe before that. Um, we are second generation owners of the company, with, uh, the first generation taking the possession of the nineteen seventy day. Um, forty-nine families depend on us for employment, uh, with over half these employees reside in the county. Um, we are the second largest private employer in the county. Um, our employees enjoy the following benefits, they have competitive wages, um, health insurance, 401K with company management contributions, um, we provide them with temporary and permanent disability insurance, and they are also given to participate in the quarterly profit sharing program. Um, Nancy and I have worked at the mill since nineteen ninety-one and nineteen eighty, second year, so we've really established our careers here in Bates County. Um, during, during the, um, planning board process, we became aware of some concerns by some of the, uh, some of our neighbors, and I'd like to just take a couple minutes to, to address those. Um, one of the things that was, um, that was a concern was the curb rail, and, you know, the folks, all the, uh, who did his own plan here, really did a wonderful thing, because they, they have a built-in protection for residents. Um, they require us to have a, not only a buffer, but also require us to have a screen, and on the maps that we, um, applied you guys, the pictures, you'll see what our proposed proposal is for that, and I think you're both, you know, I think everyone will agree it's, it's a very attractive alternative. Um, you know, the screening and the buffer does a few things, uh, one of the concerns was, you know, the dust and noise, and exactly what the buffers are in, in the screening, um, goes to prevent, so basically, um, the dust and the noise should really be a long factor. Um, one of the main things that were a concern, folks, were, were the adjacent property values, and again, I believe that, um, the industrial really goes a long way to help protect those. Under the current zone, there are a lot of things that could be done with that property. Um, you know, you, you, actually, under A one zone, you have carnivals, fairs, livestock auctions, auctions, you can have Bean Store. You can have bean store, you can have a recycling center. None of those would require a, a buffer or a screen. So I think that, I think that actually joining this I one is going to actually present the opportunity to help preserve the neighborhood property values. And it really, I'd just like to say, Nancy and I have been here a long time. We've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with Gates County, residents of Gates County, and we, we take great value in that relationship, it's important to us. And we don't want to create any issues with that. We, we believe we've been good corporate stores, and we want to continue to be good corporate stores. So, you know, anybody had any concerns, whatever, we have an open door, and we're always welcome, and certainly we'll address anything that anybody has.
Does anyone have questions?
No, I was just gonna say, we spaced off the, the buffer zone, if it's in front of the property that you can see. We, upon approval from the planning, we already put the parking lot in place across the street from our existing operation, and you can see that that frees up getting truck traffic off the road. The diagram in front shows you the two circular driveways, which is intended to be behind that screening, which will be where we'll load and unload trucks, so it will actually help keep that truck traffic off the road. So we, thank you for your consideration, we enjoy being Gates County visitors.
And what you see on there is exactly what we intend on using for. If you look at how our company's laid out, it doesn't make any sense for us to try to move, like, some big manufacturing process over that field. All of our utilities, all that stuff's already located there. We simply just needed a little elbow room. It makes our air drying much more efficient, or allows us to separate our logs much more efficient, and so, definitely what, what our intention is.
I have, I believe natural gas goes, line goes across, these trees will not, or be set back from that natural gas.
Correct.
We're in the process of getting that marked, and I actually got bits and processing. We should start planning as soon as we will, progress this process.
The natural gas line runs down the highway.
Okay, and have a question? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the issue? Mr. Lilley?
Thank you, my name is Paul Lilley. I'm property, just the director of Crossroads, if you saw me. I've had some concerns about this, as others in the neighborhood, I think I'm the only one here today. I wonder if it's been quite toxic over the weekend, he was going to bring one, heard it adopted this one, and I think the others are probably intimidated by the process from a different planning board. That is an established residential neighborhood, they are in the three houses, and they're a long time. As well as the song here, I recognize that. If this rezoning industrial, at that point, that's gonna open up a lot of things that that we don't control, where they can build a plant, anywhere they want there, or, or anything. I mean, it won't be, it won't be any other way to, to regulate what they do there. If this rezoning is gonna affect those properties in that area, there's certain six houses there, it's gonna affect the value of all those, I think probably, reset value would be less, probably difficult to sell those down the road, if families wanted to do that. Lilley and I recognize, you know, they've got a good, a good business there towards the county. What I'm asking you is, just consider that buffer zone, which is a residential area like it is, the buffer zone that's required, is really not that much to protect against a facility like that. And I would just ask if you would increase that buffer zone, maybe a little, just to give some protection to the properties that are there. Far as my land across the river, I bought that so committed one day some of my family members could deal with it across there. If it's rezoned out, you know, I don't know what we're doing in the future, but it will certainly affect the value of the property, as, as all those other properties in that area. And I'd just like to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lilley. Does anyone else who wants to speak to the issue?
Anybody, I got, I need to say, I didn't come to get to say this, but those who don't know that I'm Earl Rantry, I think I said who I am. When y'all voted on this, I didn't know, I looked at that the other day, and I didn't know y'all had expanded it, you know, you're doing good. We want industry in the county, is what everybody says. I know Jack and Hendrick, particularly y'all two, maybe all of you. We have a business here, we lost an office on Hill, and they have a number of employees that they had to relocate, and we'll give, most of, all the, the Hockler family, they tried hard to get their employees' jobs and find jobs for them, but they had to close a deal on them. And so, just think about when y'all voted on this, it could send a signal that we don't want industry. And we don't want to look after the people that are here that are employing our people. And that's all I got to say, is a signal should make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Rantry. Okay, did I have a motion? Does anyone else like to speak? I'll entertain a motion, can I, public hearing?
Come on. Sir.
Motion's been made, popularly seconded, all those opposed say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. At this time, we will entertain a motion concerning this rezoned request.
Mr. Hopple, I have a question that would like to ask, and would like to preface my question for Mr. Lilley, with a comment, and that comment being that down the road, we won't always have two amicable concerned citizens for our county as we have today. Tuck Industries and Mr. Lilley. Sometimes we'll be faced with people that are really buttonheads. So we're fortunate that we have the prior here today, so I just want to say that. But my question to Mr. Lilley, when you, when you say doubling the buffer, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's an acquired forty-foot buffer, could that acquire a name?
That's a setback.
That's not a setback.
From the, from the property line before any building can take place, the, that's a, it's a buffer, it's a setback from the property line, it's not a, with the buffer.
That's what I'm asking, if you have to increase the buffer.
And, Mr. Hopple, if I may, for, for the Tucks, Mark and Nancy, the type of trees that you selected here in the pictures, the ones that you view?
Yes.
And I know that ones in the back are pretty fast growing.
Yes.
Okay, the ones in the front, probably a little slower, but?
Slower, more ornamental, we're looking, that's something that can have a bloom and or a berry that's got color to it on a year-round basis, but would not lose its leaves.
Okay, that's a, very, very attractive. I would say to the board that I had a citizen call me, and one of the things that they would like for us, I told him that I would make this statement, it's not in our ordinance, but they said that they would like the statement we made, that this buffer was okay with them, and that they hoped that there wouldn't be any commercial-looking fence, like chain link fence out there. And from what I see you doing, I don't think you're, you intend to do that, but I promised that person that I would bring that comment here, so that's what I'm doing for them. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay, does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we could set a recommendation for my planning board to approve the parcel. I don't have a parcel number in front of me, but if it needs to be stated, we can do that.
Well, it's ten dash zero zero two four five eight, and parcel number zero seven dash zero 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 nine five.
I'd like to add that to the motion.
You'll change both of those to I one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a motion has been made in sex, in discussion. Hearing none, all those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All those, okay, okay, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I believe we need to straighten, like, these chairs get kind of hard. So we'll take a five-minute.
Okay, good, I'm going to support them, please, all of us, that. What was I going to reference, seven, for business, for us is the EMS contract. I was asked to look into some information with the school government, both in care of Longmont, beginning of last week regarding fire, I mean, EMS fees, fire fees, fire districts. She said that Gates County has a local act, and it establishes fire protection fees. She needed to look into that to see what can be done with the EMS fee. I have the eight forty-five this morning, I still have not heard back from her regarding if EMS fees can be established, and so, I was about to move that, if we need to call a different process and what was outlined in the general statutes, that we got fire protection fees.
We need time frame, we need to do that.
I will try to, you know, we can get finished today, we'll try to follow this back and do, otherwise I might hurt tomorrow.
Okay, we can forget that information, or try and get us that information.
Mr. Chairman, I was, forgot the information from Mr. Fornie regarding the questions that I had asked earlier, and in addition to the county managers, we need the information. I would like to discuss some, some of the issues regarding personnel in a closed session, if possible, if EMS available. Prior to, which right now we're not ready to approve a fire fee until we get the information. But I think if we could try to get some answers to some of the questions, that would certainly help us to move along, just move this discussion to a closed end.
Well, we can't act upon the EMS part of it, because we don't have the information from the local government, so that would have to be taken, that part. But we could go on with your questions, if I could, personnel?
Well, the EMS, how, how, personally, what would we have to do, if we have questions for them, we can ask you right now?
No, I don't think the questions that we would ask would be of the nature that would, would be discussed in a, in a session.
If they have the unbroken evidence.
Well, I think, probably, what we're, what we're doing is that our responsibility is, is, is accountable. And we're responsible, if, as we appropriate funds, we need to be able to, you know, how those funds are, are, they're being used, and used appropriately if we go. So, you know, we just need to find some additional information that is allowed by the general statute, and we have certain questions regarding personnel, it allows you to go into a closed session. This is not something to say that we're not going to support it, certainly we have to have. And we're proud of the fact that, that we do have responsible people taking care of the EMS. And as Chairman just said, we cannot move forward right now until we get the information that we need on how to implement the piece. So, a closed session would just allow us to get some additional information that we would like to have, that I would certainly like to see, to have, in order to say that whatever we're doing, you know, is transparent, accountability certainly is there.
And if it's not regarding a specific individual, we think will be mentioned and be discussed, I hope you say so.
I mean, it's transparent, that's what I would love to see, I don't, I'd share everything I know, and everyone knows what's in this stuff. Sort of, I have no problem with that.
Mr. George, I hear both the gentlemen, and I know the county board, must be transparent in the end, but it's not the end of this as well, but we would be better served if we had a discussion in an open forum, just like this, to say at our next meeting, after we have this information, we could do that, commendate, commendate you. And then this question.
Like I said, you know, we can't move forward in any way, this is just a matter, for my own personal information, if you want to do it outside of we, that's, that's fine. I think the information needs to be obtained, I guess, they need to be transparent. And I will say, in the booklet, so that we're not wondering, when we look at our EMTs, EMTs, it says we have, on page, in the booklet that you provided, it said that the average salary per paramedic is listed as seventy thousand per year. Are you looking at? Okay, when we, about the correspondence, it said that we had twelve, that were, we had twelve of them that was, it came to three hundred and eighty-some thousand. Are you looking at that? Okay, and when you divide that, that comes to twenty-eight thousand, so there was, there's a remarkable difference there. And I wanted to find out, you know, how that differs.
Question that you sent through the email, you asked, you were referencing twenty-fourteen finance numbers, and so the answer that you got back was twenty-fourteen stuff. In the presentation where it references the average hourly wage of EMTs in Gates County, Costas County, Curto County, and Shawon County, that's based on, in December two thousand fifteen, when the presentation was written.
So that's two thousand fourteen, and now it's two thousand sixteen, it's twenty-eight.
I didn't follow that last part, two thousand sixteen, it's twenty-eight?
Right, if, if you divide, I lost one page here, if you divide the twelve paramedics, or EMT salary, by the appropriate three hundred and eighty-three or whatever amount it was, it comes out to twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents. That's in paragraph one, where it says, of the three hundred, of the quarter, eighty thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. This payroll of three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, it's made to twelve EMTs on full-time status. But if you do the math on that, you'll find that is, as I said, twenty-eight. But when I look in my, my book here, my point is, we didn't break it down. We don't know who the, what the salaries are, this is just a. This is just a, a, a basic, uh, overall presentation of what they are. And I, I think, I, I think that needs to be known, you know, to the county, out of the finance department. We need to be aware of whose, what these salaries are, who they are. As, as far as transparency, you know, we are, as you recall in this. I think it's important to know that they are in line with, with other, uh, personnel who are, have similar responsibilities.
And that's what, that's what the presentation, the presentation you're referencing that dollar of per hour number. And then the answer to your question, you're referencing a total amount of money spent on payroll. So in other words, in the presentation that Mr. Morgan made to you, the average EMT in Gates County in two thousand fifteen made seventeen dollars an hour. The average, that's everybody. Some made less than that, some made more, but the average made seventeen dollars an hour. The question is, you asked me to, to clarify finances from the finance report that we provided to you. Was to tell you where four hundred eighty eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and twenty two cents from two thousand fourteen was spent. And that's what I did. I broke it down to tell you how many full time employees there were and where that money was spent, how many part time employees there were and where that money was spent.
Well, let me go back. You said seventy thousand, seventy dollars per hour. Uh, it is, it says average salary for paramedic is listed below. And salary to me was, was annual, not the hour. So that's a difference right there. The question that I presented to you was, or I sent to the county manager. It was not specific in that it asked for a breakdown of, of, of the names of every employee. Uh, but it, but it did say, please include the title of each employee slash officer, part of full time status. So in providing that, I was, I was thinking and hoping that, you know, each salary, whatever the classification is, is, is direct or whatever, that we would know what those salaries are. All, all I've gotten is a complete, one, you know, this is what we pay for all our EMTs. And it's not, like I said, transparency and accountability is, is, is what we're, what we're looking for. And, uh, and certainly I want to be able to let citizens know that, you know, what we're doing is comfortable, is fair. We've got to have it, we appreciate every one. But, but also want to make sure that, you know, what we're doing is, is just right.
I want to wrap that, Mr. Morgan.
I think that the numbers you were given make it pretty clear that no one can be paid an exorbitant salary. Because I believe, I, your number was less than thirty thousand dollars each for the highest paid employees that we have. And even if some of them were paid twenty and others were paid forty. These are all salaries that are very reasonable for a paramedic, much less someone running an organization with over half the amount of payment.
And I, you know, I, I'm not questioning, you know, the sufficiency of twenty eight versus seventeen. But again, you know, as I said, if we get, part of the one is negative twenty, another negative twenty five. It does not let me know what, what the allocations are for each one. So we can't come and know how sufficient that is.
Mr. Morgan?
We feel it's. Not appropriate to disclose the salaries of individuals. We do feel it's very appropriate to disclose the stat salary of individuals and employees. But to specifically say that this job or this person makes this much money. Gets into violating that person's rights or, or privacy. And that's the reason that the response was written the way it was. And we hope that that response would satisfy your concerns of that anyone being overpaid.
Certainly, as, as I said, that's one of the reasons I wanted to go into a close session and see if we can be moved to discussing there. My own concern, as I said, uh, is transparency and accountability. As long as those salaries are, are within what we normally appropriate for such duties, uh, there's no problem. I guess my concern would be that, you know, if we have salaries within the EMS that exceeds probably our highest salaries in the county. There may be some, some concerns there. I'm not going to say that the EMS director, uh, did not work three figures, if you will, or whatever. But I think, you know, there's, uh, when we're funding, uh, an entity of this nature, I think it needs to be some type of accountability and transparency towards, through county. As we were given, uh, we normally give each year an appropriation, uh, to support EMS. And, uh, I think it's been twenty five thousand. And, you know, other than the normal amounts that, uh, normal documents that you rely on, we did not ask for anything other than that. But at this point, I think that where we appropriate these types of funds, that there needs to be, uh, accountability to the county as to how they're being spent. That our citizens, all of our citizens of the county, uh, is supporting this. And they need to be aware that what we're doing is, is, uh, that we can account for it and make sure that it's appropriate for what's being done. Commonly across the state as well as, as other counties. In addition to moving forward, we can't move forward until we get the additional information on how to implement it. I, I would, I'd like to see that, I, I think it's broken. I would like to see that personnel break that. That's the bottom line.
Mr. Jordan, you know, we appropriate money for a lot of different organizations. And we only did plan our buys into EMS at the post time. I don't think we go in and ask them the salary of everybody that works in, everybody to, to give a price correction.
Well, I, I mean, how many other entities that we give three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
We got bitten off three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, that's, that's what I'm talking about. We're not, I'm, I, this is what. We, we need to do that if we're going to keep the services going. This is what's being asked, is three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So if we're going to give you three hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, certainly, I think we need to know how it's going to appropriate. We know there's some new equipment that's being asked for, but we don't want to give you these types of money.
Well, then, if I may, just to play the defense advocate, if it's ten thousand dollars to an organization that brings in seven thousand dollars in grants, would you be asking the same information? Or if they came and asked for seven thousand dollars in matching funds, would you be asking the same information of that organization?
Well, if you're bringing a grant, uh, if you're bringing in funds. I, I'm not here to challenge, uh, whether or not this is something we should or should not do. I'm just asking for transparency. I think it's something that anyone would ask in this particular situation. You know, I don't, I don't, I think, you know, we may be comparing the opposite horns here in that scenario, but.
I agree with your transparency. I don't have a problem telling you how much money that I make. The deputy chief just told me, she doesn't have a problem telling you all how much money she makes. What I do have a problem with is disclosing the salaries of private employees for a private organization. They're not government employees. And I'm, I'm going to go to each one of my employees and ask them, are you okay with me disclosing that amount of money? Or are you not? Because it's not my place to disclose what another individual working for a private corporation makes. If you're working for a public entity, absolutely, you don't get to make that decision. But working for a private entity, I feel like there's some, some autonomy there that they're, that they're due, that's private citizens. So I'd be more than happy to disclose them, but I'm going to go and ask each individual if they're all right with me disclosing. That, that was my position in the morning that I got the email from you. The board recommended that I answer it the way that I answered it because if it does show transparency, it shows you that unless everybody, unless the, the other eleven are making a thousand dollars a year. Then that one individual, no one individual is making an exorbitant amount of money.
Okay, must I run, man?
Sir, you will recognize me because I'm not, I, I just asked, I wanted to ask him maybe that with the, the, I don't know what she does. Uh, and we got Tom here. I've had a kip up with this very much, however, the rest of yous go out and all works and, uh, now. Is this a corporation, Tom? And you receive money from the county as a grant?
It is a corporation. It's a nonprofit corporation. And we have received twenty five thousand dollars a year for the last several years in contract, under a contract with the county.
Well, this twenty five thousand?
Twenty five thousand.
And now you're asking, by how much?
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Okay. And but, so this is, I, I'm kind of getting it, if we're going back to Commissioner Hopler and maybe, I think, is the fact that, uh, you got disclosing these salaries. If you have a private nonprofit corporation, then you are not going to be required, the law, to give up any salaries. If you were owned by the county or the state, you would be, it would be public record. But as a nonprofit organization, a corporation, and just taking money and you give, this county gives you, doesn't have the money. I understand and agree with Mr. Jordan completely, the fact that as taxpayers, we like to know where the money is going. But not being a lawyer from the standpoint of the fact is that I don't see how we could ask for people's salary when we are only giving twenty five thousand dollars.
So I, I, I. Can I make a comment? Would it to satisfy everyone instead of, or by name, to say, okay, the administrative category, how much money? Person who is a beginning paramedic makes per year without the, um, instead of doing it by names, by categories, uh, positions?
No, it was no, no request to him by, by name. Basically, the question was by title, as fast as I put, put the names on it. And, and there again, uh, you know, when you look at public entities, whether they're nonprofit or not, you take the salary, you know, they don't have any problem disclosing what their officers make or presidents, whatever. Any nonprofit organization, uh, most of them, you know, they're, they're willing to disclose that. And we've never asked anything like this. Of course, we've never been asked to give three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Certainly, I see where, you know, it, it would be, you need a bunch to operate. We have in place, uh, means of, of making, uh, uh, funds, if you will, from the EMS side, the non, uh, non emergency side, uh, transport side. All those fees, all they operate this particular time. I know the last time they were raised was two thousand thirteen. So, you know, there's a lot of variables that we don't have control over. And I'm just, like I said, three hundred fifty thousand dollars is, is, is a request that's hundreds and hundreds of percents more than what we've already done. And it's, it's something that we're going to need to answer to the citizens of this county as to how we're appropriating that. So.
Okay, I think Mr. Belgian had a comment.
It just seems to me that, uh, the, we are, I, I would hate to see this board try to be a manager for the EMT for the emergency process. And it seems to me that at this point, we're asking to limit the number of EMTs you can hire on them. How many paramedics you can hire to save money, plus know how much you want to pay each one of these. I do not feel, I would feel very uncomfortable if this board was to, to do that, to try to operate the emergency services. We have a good board and a group of good emergency workers that do that very well. And I think they, that they do not leave it up to tell them how to run their operation. And as far as appropriating the three hundred fifty thousand dollars, we all know that we just gave four million dollars to develop a sewage system for a private developer that will benefit only that one private developer. This is three hundred fifty thousand that will benefit or have the potential to benefit every citizen in the county. And every one of us, very possibly, will need that, that service at some time in our lifetime. I don't see how we can possibly tell them no and we just hold the other one, yes, just for some form of.
Okay, um.
Ben Chet?
Mr. Morgan?
I don't know if this would help you at all, but we have a form for federal government, we fill out every year called a NINE ninety. And a NINE ninety requires disclosure for nonprofits if anyone is paid more than a hundred thousand dollars. And we do not pay anyone any more than a hundred thousand dollars because, and the, the best form is filed and showed that. If you look at the rate that we have to pay in order to give a paramedic, it's somewhere in that neighborhood of seventeen dollars, sixteen, seventeen dollars.
Is that, that's enough?
Right. For a year, it's twenty, you can just about double that and pay it. So it's about thirty two thousand a year that you have to pay to give a paramedic. When you divide, you know, and you, and you divide what you got, you got twenty nine. You know, so we're twenty nine back in the year, what you get when you divide less than thirty. So we're paying on average less than sixteen dollars an hour. I don't see how in the world you could ask three more. You know, and that's a very, very cheap, reasonable price for a paramedic.
Well, and I, I don't doubt that. Uh, I, I heard what Commissioner Hopler said, uh, in regards to not managing, uh, the hand queue. But, uh. When, when you're, you're giving out funds and have no idea of how the operation is going. It's, to me, you know, maybe next year, maybe seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. It'll just, it could go up to a million and a half, I mean, what's, what's the stopping point? I mean, what is, where's the end?
Well, the answer from your view, from, if I was seeing where you are, I would look at what competitive it is for similar service might be. And I tried to address that in my presentation. And similar service on a bid to what you're receiving today is going to be well over half a million dollars. That's for just an annual, it's not half. Doesn't include volunteer work and all that kind of stuff. It's being given on top of that. So if we, as an EMS, raise our prices above what you can hire someone else, then I would expect you to bid at and, and high. But I believe that if Gates County were to get out, they would need to bid for two halves to, to a million. And I think you're going to find a million for that to be at least being a hundred thousand dollars. And so I believe that we are offering you the lowest cost alternative for the service that you're receiving. And so I believe that we're offering you the lowest cost alternative for the services you're receiving.
Right. And over the years, we've, uh, as far as the rescue squad side and the emergency transport side, we've got two sides here. Emergency, rescue squad is, uh, basically it's sponsored to, uh, accidents or, or type of emergency. And if someone is, is a diabetic or whatever and gets sick, then we respond to that at, at home. Uh, those are built, the MS transport side is, is built. It's, uh, uh, we should be operating that part of it, that should be self-sustaining. Would you agree with me on that?
Nine-one side?
No, I'm saying the emergency transport side.
Non-emergency.
Non, non-emergency side. That should be self-sustaining.
Absolutely.
Totally self-sustaining.
It's profitable.
Okay, pardon?
It's profitable.
It should be sustainable?
It is profitable.
And, and could, it should be profitable. Uh, the rescue squad side is a sign that we, uh, each county has to ensure that it's in place, something's in place. Uh, we've had this over the years, and I think when I looked up the history, I think in nineteen sixty-four, sixty-six, somewhere around there, uh, the rescue squad was started, then became, became law. Uh, that is funded through donations, uh, grants or whatever you're able to appoint to do that. Uh, but when you look at that side, that side is not, uh, manned, if you will, or, uh, you don't require that much reaction or response from that side as you do the, the EMT side, so.
That's incorrect. Last year, we ran about the same amount of nine-one calls as we ran non-emergency transport calls.
From the rescue squad?
Yes, sir. We ran fourteen thirty-seven high gear and we did fifteen hundred and ten non-emergency transports. So they're, they're running about fifty-fifty. Like I said, the non-emergency business is profitable. I'm telling you, it is profitable. I know that it's. The, the nine-one side is not profitable. The difference in the two is when you call nine-one, I have to come, by law, I have to come to your house, whether you pay me or not. The non-emergency side, I get to do some background investigation to make sure that I'm gonna receive money before I come to your house. That's the two differences.
There's another fact, too, that non-emergencies are keeping the emergency money.
Absolutely. If we weren't going the non-emergency business, we'd be asking for at least another hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, on top of what we're asking for.
Okay, we need probably to, um, I, we have tabled any way of cards, so if we don't have information from the school government, but I would let us.
One quick thing, neither of you and I live alone, uh, and I'm diabetic. And I want to say to Billy Felton something that he probably knows. If I, yesterday, my blood sugar dropped way down, uh, I started having chest pains. Uh, that sewage field out there that y'all spent four million dollars on, they're gonna have me a damn bit.
Okay, um, I don't see any other means.
Yeah.
And we need to gather information that county managers are searching for. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to table that until such time the county manager tells us she has appropriate information.
Okay, the motion, that's important.
Make a motion.
But to table the, um, this until we get the information from school government.
Uh, chair, I'm saying that motion.
Second, that, the motion's been made, second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. So that's tabled until we get the information from school government. Okay, planning board and board of adjustments, text amendment, discussion. Is this the, the, are we five?
Yes.
Part one that we got now.
No, this is the planning board.
Okay, planning board. Okay.
Um, the planning board information that you're receiving now, um, this reflects, um, changes that were noted, um, during the first discussion, um, needing, um, to input the information that are requested to be changed.
I know there's some legal residents that feel that unincorporated areas of each county, a little out of date with a lot of the, certain of the whole. And I haven't had a chance to read the rest of it, of course, we just got it.
Right, you have highlighted the parts that you have changed or where you have added, made additions. We have to know what, they get put in the, um, general statutes.
Yes.
Um, since we have just received this, I think we need to take time to study this and go, I, you know, and read it and come back to the question. Mr. Felton, if that we need to ask?
Yes, of course.
Um, so would you entertain a motion to table this?
Uh, make that motion, the planning, the planning board until the next, maybe.
Okay, the motions are made promptly second, um, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
So we are, what, table the planning board until we have time to study? Okay, now, the board of adjustments, um, would you like to make any comments about that, or should we just talk?
You can just look it up and, um, discuss, y'all can just look it up and talk about it. We're gonna, I think, know when to see which of them change.
Okay, everyone's got a chance to look over the board of adjustments, um, text amendments.
I would tell, and I had the same, same discussion on that one, and illegal residents, if you allow, and not allowing anyone from Gatesville to participate.
Well, when I, um, when I initially sent this out to you guys, I mean, even though it's an email, they had the same concerns that were, were addressed from planning board, I just wanted to give it to y'all as quickly as possible. So I just sent it out the day of the meeting or the day after. So the same concerns that are for the planning board and the board of adjustment, they're gonna be changed over.
Okay, like US resident?
Yes.
And this is what the board of adjustment put, correct?
Yeah, well, the planning board and the board of adjustment has had a chance to review the information.
And I do have, um, let's go ahead, the, starting with, is there any other areas you have concerns to? Hearing none, but you'll come back to you, um, Mr. Felton, you, um?
As I just mentioned, under legal residents, I think that unincorporated needs to be taken out of it. I think Gatesville should be allowed to participate. On the, F one, that says regular meeting, I believe the location needs to be put into that notice because this is a public meeting and the public needs to know where their location is for them to be. And on the G three, where the notice is posted, there's no mention of it being located, it's in the local paper. I think the notice needs to be posted in the local paper, too. And, uh, all through this, and, and keep referring to disorder, 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 which probably anybody reading knows what disorder is, is a zoning ordinance. But I think it would be a whole lot clearer if it would say, for example, duty number one says official charge was important, you zone your, uh, in disorders. And that, that, that just occurs many times in the all way through.
Okay, um, that was just happening days from the existing?
Yeah, I know of it, I, I know of it. But we're rewriting this, I think it'd be a good thing to change that so that there is no question as to what disorder is. And under the same thing, like, uh, application process, under B, where there's no mention of it being a public notice, into the paper again, it's posted in the library before I, so. I mean, I would also see it posted in the papers also, but when, and that, was that based on the new law that, that such has been advertised, uh?
Electronically.
Electronically?
Yes, it was part of that. In addition, we've been, we have a lot of problems with getting things posted in the newspaper accurately. And when we put it in, if we leave it in the ordinance, then it has to go in the newspaper. If it isn't published in the newspaper correctly or the newspaper forgets to put it in like we sometimes do, then we have to cancel the whole meeting because of the level of burden with the, with the board of adjustment.
Well, like, where it sits about the notice of hearing, um, it doesn't say it's on my website. But I was looking at notice of hearing website, but, um, Commissioner Felton referenced, I'm going to, uh, on G three. So it doesn't say website. Assistful point, don't, I don't know, I hope my, our comments, but, um.
Right, I mean, if it's, if it's legally, uh, allowed, I, you know, surely if the payment's put in there, you know, it's good. But, uh, I'm just not sure if we want to put that burden on us if we don't have to. Not violating any, any general statutes or that.
We can add it in, um, as a, lower the, we can write it so that we can lower the, um, responsibility so that if it does, because we will continue to send it to the newspaper. But if we can write in to lower the effect, if it does not run, then as long as we put it on the website, we post that at different locations and things like that, um, and it doesn't go in the newspaper, we can still go ahead on and conduct the, conduct the meeting.
You can put it, that, that has to be submitted to the local court?
Yeah, you know, something where it's, you know, it's not an imperative, but yeah, we can, we can write it like that.
Are we, is this, this is not something that we're getting free from the newspaper?
No.
Well, if we're submitting something to them to be done, it needs to be done, if I may, um, Chair. I can recognize Melissa, she's got some.
Yeah.
I was making notes.
The planning board and the board of adjustment, general meeting notices, just saying that there's gonna be a meeting held, are free. They're FYI ads. Now, if we are posting a public hearing, we pay for that. So the paid ads are required to be in, but if they are incorrect, we have the dilemma of, do we then cancel the meeting and run it for another two weeks? But they comp that cost. Now, if you want, but that's only for a meeting that's gonna have a public hearing. So it's just a general meeting notice we've not typically paid for. So if you want every meeting, public hearing or not, to be notified, um, that'll have a budget impact.
And.
Let me, let me say this, and I'm not saying this out of thought, but it's put in the paper incorrectly, that's unacceptable. We need to establish a proofing.
We try, in place. They don't, they don't, the newspaper is not good at responding. And you can ask Melissa, she has gone over to the newspaper to try to get them to adequately send us proofs. We can't even really get affidavit, we're supposed to get affidavits from the newspaper that are certified, um, with copies of the ad certifying that this actually ran in the newspaper. Since I have been here, I have not received the affidavit yet. So I have to clip the ads and pull the whole page out of the newspaper as proof that we have actually run the ad. We're, we have nothing to get out. Affidavit is straight, um, we very rarely receive proofs. We very, very rarely even receive the quotes saying this is, um, how much it costs. When we receive the bill, we receive a bill two, three months after the ad has ran, and it just says ran on this date, and we have to figure out if it's hers, if it's mine, if it's somebody else's. It, it, it's really quite difficult to deal with them on the billing and keeping it professional and trying to figure out what we, you know, what we're actually paying for. We have several payments now that we owe the, owe the newspaper that are in dispute because we don't have a clue what they're charging us for. What newspaper we ran, who ran the ad, is, is really, is really kind of burdensome.
I know, um, Mrs. Lawrence went over there personally, face to face, and what was it like going about the meeting?
They had a lot of staff transition, um, and there, there is a staff member that has now returned. So I'm hopeful the stuff is, it's gonna get better. You know, my main thing is I just want you to realize that a general meeting notice is not paid for. So if it does not run, we have no complaints there. Because we just say, hey, can you run this as an FYI for citizens? So if you want every meeting to be sure, to be advertised, we're gonna have to incur a cost.
And we only incur a cost when it's for the board of adjustment because they do conduct their own public hearing and we, when we bring it to the county commission, um, because y'all do conduct the public hearing. For the planning board, we don't, you know, we send the general and they see it. We don't have, we don't do the, the legal ad.
About chairman?
Yes, sir.
In those cases, does that shift the burden of proof, Mr. Felton, do you know that?
If it doesn't run, if it shouldn't.
Or we don't have any proof?
If we don't have, if we don't, if we don't have any proof for, um, it doesn't run, then we can't conduct the meeting. If, that, that's only if, we make it a requirement in our ordinance that it has to run in a newspaper in order for it to be, um, a valid notice for the public hearing.
You're talking about G four, the, uh, G one D. That says, any other person entitled to receive a notice, notice, does that include the signature?
No, the only, the other person that's entitled to receive the notice is if, like, the advocate is some, like, if the advocate is someone different than, um, if the advocate doesn't meet the representative and I send them another, that's the person, I send a additional notice. That's, that involves, um, the advocates in the surrounding properties and any representatives.
A term for.
Yeah.
I would, I would change, uh, the one that George is talking about, I would take the word other out and put the word known. Because if you don't run, then you're, you're taking that out of your responsibility.
Okay, um, Mr. Lawrence?
Um, well, I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Felton on my Gatesville constituents. Uh, where incorporated does not need to be in that. In that same paragraph, current taxes can't be deleted. And you take the word current out for, um, some, some definition there. And I'll leave the others that they touched on. Um, Chair, we're in, are we in the area of, I can tell you this again?
Well, I have a couple of concerns. So, um, on the front page, under D, I just think that under the second paragraph, absences from three percent to three for scheduled meetings or the fifty percent during one calendar year, or meetings during one calendar year. I don't have to need or or, you know, fifty percent, you're not the happy time, you know? You don't need the or or. I think that gets a little.
Make it a time. Make it a...
Yeah. 50%.
It's missing in that quote, or or. It's a full 50 off the application.
There's too many ors in there.
When application D, we remove.
Um, and going still on that same 13.0103, going to D.
Could you say that one more time?
13 dash 01.03, rules and procedure. Um, D. The Board shall not be required to hear an appeal or application free or unless denied if it finds that there has been necessary change in conditions or circumstances bearing on the appeal or application. I understand the point of that. I think that's great. But for the Board of Adjustment, they appeal. Their appeal is to a circuit. But if you don't like the decision of the Board of Adjustment, you have to take it to a circuit court, don't you? Or Superior Court?
Um, that's for... I mean, the appeal... The appeal is like if it's an appeal to the executive, like, if I make a decision, um, for somebody's property and they're not happy with my decision, they have a right to take it to the Board of Adjustment. And that's the appeal. That's... Then the person is appealing my decision.
So this is for...
Yeah, this appeal is for an administrative...
Decision.
Yeah, administrative decision.
Okay. Well, where is... Does that say that anywhere? It's in the heading. Okay, okay.
I can put it... I can put in administrative decision appeal.
Administrative, I think.
In... On first page, under D. There... There are some situations that I... I actually know of one. There's a person living in the county that would never pay taxes since his tax pay in the citizen in Gates County to where they, um, they have a lifetime money from a grandfather. And they served and been on a 20 committees for the county. This is a real life case. I'm not bringing this up in the future. And they'll never pay... This person will never pay taxes in the county. They'll never even be listed on our tax registration, except for their vehicle they drive. So I'm just... I mean, I'm not trying to be nitpicky there, but... And I don't know how you want to reword that, but just consider that. And this person was a... This guy was a citizen, didn't he, or...
Well, when I corrected it for the Planning Board, which y'all have in front of you guys now, I just put it as number four, who does not, um, an individual who does not have any current tax and tax delinquencies.
Where is that?
When I added the... The new one that I gave you for the Planning Board.
Oh, okay. I can piggyback incorporate that in?
Yes. That everything was 20 feet.
Okay, well, I think we see that we have some questions and that we need to... And this is a process where you need to keep revising and more eyes to see it. Hopefully we pick up every scenario and we will not, we try to. Um, and so we will once again have to say, do we need a motion to table this? Or do just you come back at our next meeting, which is...
All right. You change it, you noted, um...
So we need to see the patent draft.
Yes. And we have to run it. We have to run it for a public hearing before you guys can go on. Um, this is just like a discussion for me to get all the comments so I can go back and report meeting and send them back out to you.
Just need to put it...
Yes.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Board Director make the noted corrections and, uh, and put it to us with those corrections and I'll make a meeting.
Mr. George, can I get you to amend that or add to your motion? Your motion that we received in an email. Prior to the... So, uh...
Say it. It might happen.
I'll say that.
Okay, motion's been made and sectioned to direct the Planning Director to incorporate the suggestions that were made and it's been listed all correct.
There's one... One thing that I wanted to... One, the chairman of all that D, like, the appeal for the application. The more I read that, the more I see that it really needs to be changed completely, not just that administrative appeal. It needs to be... Because the Board cannot rehear an application that has been denied if they want someone to appeal it after they have a spirit code. And I know what you're talking about, uh, you know, application. Somebody wants to appeal your decision. But this had also said an application that had been previously denied.
I really do think that needs to be reworked.
If that's the case, application should be noted.
Yeah, because it became a appeal on a spirit code.
Because I mean, well, that's a little super. And I understand what you're saying and I will reword it because this can also mean for an application, like, they will submit an application, but they will submit it for something else. Um, and if the Planning, if the Board of Adjustment has found out, you know, denied one application, it'll change its liking. It's not... It's not an appeal. For example, like, somebody comes for a variance and they want a variance of 10 feet and the Board denies it. Then they come back the next month, they start appealing it to Superior Court because they can only appeal it for the 10 feet, the what was denied. They come back and submit another application and do it for 8 feet or whatever. That's a whole application. There would have to be a whole denial. It can't change and be a stream and appeal it to Superior Court. Superior Court can only hear what it was actually denied for.
Okay, and tell that, same D under there, where you have denied, you might want to have denied by. So it'd be what party, or what party denied. About how many of us are there?
Yeah.
Okay. Super the motion, um, and follow the discussion.
No, for the discussion, I would like that. Has there ever been one appealed to Superior?
Not that... Not since I've been here. We... When I was in Guilford County, we used to have a couple that would go, um, for appeal to Superior Court. It was very rare, um, but it hasn't known to happen.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And thank you. I know it's... I hope you don't think it would be hit, but we need to get it right.
Well, no, I mean, it's a... Yeah, it is a process. When you're dealing with two boards, you know, one board will make our innovation and, you know, somebody will see something different, so it's a process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, of course, to the Board of Adjustments. Okay, budget amendments. I can't get it. I can't get it.
I remember it's likely the easiest thing to do over there. Shouldn't have number 17 and 18 on the packet?
And these are just, uh, budget for a new grant for emergency management?
Number 17 is a grant that you all approved back in the fall and this is just a little budget for it so that nobody can't spend it alone. There's no county money involved. There's strictly grant funds. Number...
Is it just the total amount of grant?
That's the 4,000 is the total. Correct. And number 18 is to budget for additional late funding that ESS has received. And we do our budgets and we'll credibly estimate the number and then in the middle of the year, we staple through that number up and we usually get some additional funding. Um, so this is just to put on the actual funding amounts.
Okay, I think we can take care of both of these at the second half. Entering motions for budget amendment 17 and 18.
I'll move.
Motion's been made. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, budget amendment 17 and 18, all opposed. Thank you. Billy, keep writing those. Okay, moving on to the Board of Adjustments.
Currently, we have not received any applications specifically to the Board of Adjustment. We do have two that are from any board that is available. We did not bring those today.
Okay, so are they planned this meal and also era?
Nelson? No, Nelson, um...
What was it?
Page.
Yes.
Okay, um, we need to go right and try some first people and so we will take that to the next meeting and make a motion. Just take that since we had an action.
I'll move the table there. Next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, the staple it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, what is the community advisory committee?
This is a request for you to order to best replace every year at 3 o'clock. To be appointed out on kids and Martha Lutherspoon. Two of the Gates County Community Advisor Committee, all their terms expired in September. And this is just noted that, so she's brought that to our attention. This is not for the new... The new membership.
This is just for the current?
This is for the current, so they can continue serving.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Hannah Martha Lutherspoon all of these to the community advisor committee.
Okay, um, do I have a second?
Second, a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion is sent made to your point, Anne Howard, all of the kids and Martha Lutherspoon to the Gates County Community Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, citizens' comments. Oh, no, I... Yeah. Connect North Carolina Resolution. Miss, you came and asked us for a resolution.
Yeah, this is from COA. Ms. Yurek was just here to explain what this was about. This is came directly from COA. Uh, I believe you have a copy of it in front of you. They're asking the county if there would be one to support this resolution. I would like to make you aware, because this was brought up about the City and County Managers Association meeting last week, that there will be an act required by the counties for the community college part of this... Of this bond.
And the county college? I mean, that was on that sheet.
For your community college, which is... I don't know how we divide it for COA. I don't know how anyone else makes Gates County share.
Were you referring to originally that we saw earlier as Congress for this?
Yeah. Yeah. Wow. So he wants to support something that's got a price tag. We don't know how much it is.
But what COA is, it wasn't.
Okay, I agree with you.
What was it? I got mine in the back.
And I guess this is, uh, we're assuming this is ironclad too, right?
Well, it's probably not ironclad, same thing, though.
I don't have any of the neon eyes.
Okay, COA.
Right there. Six... Six million, five hundred ninety thousand.
But that whole 20 years and... I'm assuming it would be divided among all of the accounts, yeah, but no, it's not.
Madam Chairman, for this, uh, if we... If we don't sign the resolution, we'll be the only county in North Carolina that does not, just, uh, for the benefit of everybody who's just doing that in Canada, we'd be the only ones.
Well, my question was, Madam Chair, was, uh, are we being asked to support this? No, I'm down to the C and D.
Well, Commissioner Lawrence says that we are... It's kind of the, um, hand is so low. Our extension does not advocate for it, yes. This is coming from COA that is asking for the commissioners to support the resolution.
Oh, this resolution from COA?
Yes. They were the ones that came from the office of the President, Candy Determire. Her assistants sent this to me.
But everything they delivered us is in red and has NC State written at the top of it.
No, no, that packet, no, that packet was distributed by NC State to extension to the state education. That was part of what it came about. For some reason, the extension was one of the people or one of organizations that had to go out and educate the public about it because it was basically part of their mission.
Education, see, they have archery areas, state parks. I mean, those areas are...
Madam Chairman, let me... Let me say that, uh, the resolution, uh, does not address the College of Agriculture. Only it addresses the whole bond. We see that our state parks would receive 860,000 dollars, I believe, for it. So, uh, having that information before us, uh, I'll make a motion that we sign and endorse, uh, this resolution supporting 200,000 dollar bond campaign of education, agriculture, parks, and water supply.
Motion is been made. Is it in support of this resolution? Do I hear a second?
Second, a motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion?
This one is for, now, I was quiet. I listened earlier today. Carry a good load of bets that invested in 48 state parks. I believe that number is not correct. If I had to remember, I'll look into that and correct it.
I thought I had it stated, Paul. Uh, and I believe when, um, Joey, um... I said, do I support the kind support of the...
For the mill pond.
For the mill pond, that they would approve the bond for the mill pond.
For the...
Yeah. So, I mean, we've already done that one. Okay, any other stuff? And due to, you know, send wrong information about the number of state parks, this is not gonna be embarrassing. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, the citizens' comments. Uh, Mr. Reich, I believe he said you have a comment that you want to do it in. Did my memory serve you for us?
Well, uh, I have several, but I don't mean absolutely nothing. Another point is, I know how old it is. I know how old it is. And I'm sitting there thinking that I know really high and getting extremely old when I planned out last week that I would have known four generations of Lortzes. And don't that make you old? Four generations. So, uh, anyway, I lived by there until August, so that I can...
Have a fifth generation?
Huh?
So you have a fifth generation?
No, that's the fourth generation. You got a fourth. Um, real quick, Henry, he brought up about this bond issue that y'all... They said y'all support. And, um, that money jack was basically reached net pretty quick. Because, and the reason NC State's all over that stuff is that originally this bond was... The government was gonna have it for highway improvements. And they ended up deciding that he was from Doug. Well, UNC and NC State, no, not the UNC system and NC State. A lot of people think that NC State's a part of UNC, but it's not NC State. There's special people to that. And, uh... But anyway, that's part of... They pushing this stuff here. I won't tell you the facts. This is not political. I'm political and correct. Reason that NC State all over is that they're pushing to get the money. UNC is doing the same thing. And of course, they throw in the mill pond and they're called caveats. Isn't that the word, caveats? They throw in the mill pond and then they come ask you to support it and deal by, I said, we need, we're gonna give them money. Uh, but anyway, not... I'm not all against it, but the money, basically, they already know what they were spending on. And, uh, Henry's right. But the reason I say all of this and my... Going around on this school situation, real quick, we do that for that. I had intelligent individuals saying to me, "Well, why don't the county just have a bond issue?" Now, this was an intelligent individual. And I'm sitting there thinking, what are you making me do? Somebody's gonna give us this money and we might have to pay it back. So sometimes you got to understand and the community what you're dealing with. But I think that the woman, I didn't take a lot of time, but what I was trying to convey to you my short time was today about, you know, meeting the school board is to don't mess around too much and waste too much time on this thing. And the other point was the fact that, uh, naturally, I have to... And the other point was the fact that, uh, naturally, I got the information directed from her after I had called somebody else, but I wouldn't work that. Because a prominent citizen has a prominent job working here in Gainesville, and he tells me, he said, well, we don't need fifty million dollars to build a school anyway, because we're going to get a bunch of grants. Well, this is the information, and the reason that I touched on false information that's being given out, that is simply is not true. But, I mean, I read all of you, you know, but I haven't ever lived in a, we talked about it, and, uh, we, y'all, I don't know how you're going to go about it, other than be kind of pointed, right, and say, look, let's get, stick with the facts, let's stick with the facts, and that's all, we don't have to meet next, we got to make, I would come if they would have to talk, but I don't make the talk. What I did want to talk about, I know every one of you well, I have asked some of you to serve in this job that you have, I've given some of you a little bit of money to buy some signs for, and, uh, supported all of it. And Mr. Jordan made a comment, and he went down, I put a finger to a sign in my yard, I wonder if they got it, and he says, he said there was a smile on his face, but he was serious, he said, you know, this is called your motto, I don't know how you put it, hard ain't the grief or something. Well, I didn't know at the time that, uh, Mr. Hill, I don't know what the, what, I'm saying, Mr. Hill would go straight state and make up all kinds of stories. And I mean, state level people, and Representative Steinberg was the first one that, he was looking out of nothing, idiot was high, was a trailer to the world. But anyway, I found out that, so anyway, couldn't hit the signs in my yard, but I was ready to do it, and I had to do it again, I thought, the circumstances. Well, why don't y'all just do, and this is directed towards you, Henry, I like you, you're a gentleman, you brought up some good points, but I am responsible for Edgar Mitchell being hired. Some of you maybe all knew that story, but I'll tell it real quick. When, we didn't have a plan, I mean, of, of the state. Tim Russell was our county manager, of course, Tim was very experienced, he had almost thirty years county manager, a great guy. And, uh, but it was, it was unethical to go right here and say, Edgar, would you come to Gates County and work, because you have a job. So, and it was advertised job, so, but, uh, they advertised a salary. Well, if the lady Edgar looked at the salary and he said, I need to take the payback, and I don't know whether Jack would go to work for another time, just to take the payback or not, unless he was really in bad shape. But anyway, the whole bottom line, and I hope all this is all right, and it's Alamo County goes back to your limitations, we got. They asked lady, says, would you contact Edgar Mitchell and see if you worked out a deal or see if he wants to come to Gates County? Being that I was a private citizen, it was unethical for me to do it, I don't get it. So, but I didn't know Edgar Mitchell, get it straight, I just had the name, but he worked the past, the county, he provided a bunch, and then his boss over there, uh, and, uh, so I made a few phone calls, a couple of phone calls, and he had Edgar make all the good man. So anyway, this process went on for, they run the whole down, the DDA, put in an application, and then negotiated a salary, and Kim and I got along great, first time, I mean, one was down last time, and that was going along great, and that one I haven't had a word yet. But anyway, the point is, Kim, sitting at his office, you know, and says, we talked about it, come up with a salary, he said, Edgar came up with a salary, I negotiated, finally Edgar said, I worked for that, Kim said, we were paying that, GS Mitch was the chairman of the board, GS I talked about there in three days, so it was all done. Edgar Mitchell, as no one in this county has ever called me and complained about what Edgar Mitchell does. I mean, he is, uh, he knows, y'all got permission to call you, but you'd be shocked with the number of people calling me, because anything I've done, they come in here and complain, and they won't, but I never had that. But Mr. Jordan, that must, I don't sound too good, you and I use a girl on him, but for some reason or another, you and Edgar have crossed over. And I think that, you know, and I was hoping to work this out through the, maybe the county manager, or the county attorney, and Edgar, now, my advice to Edgar is this, you as commissioner was none of this, if you can remember, y'all hired two people. Y'all live it, right? Y'all hired two, she's one of them, and the tax supervisor was gone. Some counties, gray area, that Melissa's, some counties, but, but anyway, y'all technically hired two people. So protocol, and I'm sure Ray, who grew up in government, does all that protocol, would be, if Mr. Mitchell was doing something wrong, would be to contact his boss, who's madly, and says, you know, he's doing something wrong. But yeah, I'm going to tell you, break one leg, I'm not trying to make you mad, put you on the spot, I'm just going to be honest with you. You cannot go in to a person who's in some type of code enforcement, character bad a little soon, like he had on Bad Girl, you can't go in there and try to get him not to do his job, or to improperly do his job. He has rules to go by, Edgar believes in the book, he goes by the book, and, uh, I want dispute to stop, I really do, because it's, it's, it's not getting us anywhere. Edgar's doing the job, he's supporting the law. Now, if you got, and, and, all of this was documented, notes on it, uh, you know, when, what you said, then you said, uh, did, maybe he didn't think you were doing that, but he helped, and I, and my advice to Edgar is, I said, don't pay attention to him. I said, cause, you know, just listen to him, smile at him, but still do your job. And, and so, um, cause I, I, we can get back and forth in this purity time test, and none of us come out of it. But I would hope that all the board would agree with me, and I would hope that Mr. Jordan would see the fact that you cannot go in here, it's against the law. Yet some people that I know have known personally, and I put it in my notes that I lost my notes, but let me, some of these people, you could have heard of them. But he was, he had, I don't know which he, but I mean, maybe, uh, some of these people that, uh, Meg Scott Phelps. Meg Scott Phelps, have you all known Meg Scott Phelps? Heard your daddy, he was commissioner of Alcoa, so he was the governor, he was a US senator. Her daddy was governor, and Meg Scott decided she wanted to be commissioner of Alcoa, and she wanted that job so bad that she overlooked the law. And her, Meg Scott, and I used to talk on the phone a lot, when she was running, and right after she got the job, next thing I know, she's in federal prison, and she's part of that TV program, The Orange is the New Black, because she went from a black pantsuit to an orange jumpsuit. Speaker of the House, black, orange jumpsuit. Sam Kern, man, I've never heard of, Sam was a US prosecutor, a superior court judge. I'm, he, I carried his card in my pocket until I wore it out, because he said many times he gave me that, like, call me. His wife was a dean, makes the list, of County College Law School, orange jumpsuit. Um, then the last one, I got a bunch of them, this is last, this guy was from North County, La Prue, I can't really pronounce his name, I can't even read what I read, I don't even spell it. But anyway, I did know he was a candidate, he represented for North County, I met him in two thousand and eleven. Really impressive guy, I thought, I mean, he was real go-go-go, and he had a problem with Department of Transportation, and he was going to introduce some legislation up there, and, uh, I was up there, and, uh, and I really liked him, he wanted me to speak to the media with his hat and hat, but he couldn't understand the law. He thought he was more important than he was, orange jumpsuit. All these people were in federal prison too, and all that. But what I'm saying is that you, you know, uh, you can't go out here and think that a county commissioner, he can do just like he wants to do, just like my friend Sam, best friend we used to have, and he thought because he was what he was, that all he needed for it. I don't think, y'all mad, I hope I make sense, and I hope y'all all agree with what I have to say, and Henry, I hope you take it in heart, nothing personal, uh, but Edgar has the job to do, and, uh, his job is not to twist the rules, Edgar's about a good man. You've been a law enforcement, I don't know how many times you've bent the rules, but there's one thing for sure, if you start bending the rules, you'll keep on bending the rules. If you're lucky, you don't get an orange jumpsuit. If you stay straight and follow the law and never bend the rules, now Edgar will use common sense, and that was the problem we had with Edgar, there is such a thing as common sense, and some of the things that some of our bill and inspections have done are so stupid, but anyway. Thank y'all for listening to my story, I'm sincere about it, and, uh, I hope we can move forward.
Well, let me just address this part, this here, the public meeting on the counter. Um, I've never directed Edgar to do anything, any discussions that I've had with him has been exactly that, a discussion, uh, any issues that, that I've had with any results of what he's done, I have taken it to the county manager, and so, uh, I do not accept the fact that I have said anything to him that would be considered a directive other than a discussion, and I think that, uh, any employee of the county, uh, the commissioners should be able to have a discussion with him, not to enforce what they're doing, but even to find out, uh, more information about what they're doing in case they do want to, uh, have some influence on policies. Their job that, uh, the inspector does, uh, it is addressed in general statutes, the county commissioners do have the authority to set policy on how those rules are carried out, there's a general statute for that. So, uh, certainly I respect Edgar's employees, what he does, I do not intend to tell him how to do his job, but if there are situations where we don't feel that it's done correctly, certainly county manager will be informed of that, uh, and, and try to address it. So I appreciate it, you're amazing, of course.
Well, one thing that I never did, and will, you know, how you pull on things, I want to, uh, either January sixth meeting.
You had the one on January sixth?
Yes, that's the one I called back, I think, on the sixth, the day, I mean, once to be. I know y'all had this thing about Edgar and the whole county thing, and, uh, and it was a three to two vote, and, uh, about it, and then it was a four to one vote, Jack got thinking about it, I hope, and found Jesus, and it was a four to one vote, and, uh, so that's another thing. You know, you see, politics is a strange thing, everything you do is scrutinized and analyzed, and I sit down, and I, you know, I'm addicted to this crap, and, you know that, and I, and I, and I'm probably one of the few people in the county that's sat down here and drank coffee and watched the county commissioners meet, but thank y'all for letting this go, and I enjoyed having this whole quiet conversation, I thank y'all for the remarks, and, but, don't miss, don't go in and be careful what you say to Edgar, and if you got any complaint with him, take it up to his boss, that's what I'm going to do. If he's, I want to find out where the fish is.
One question, one question is, uh, Sam Kern's wife was Margaret Kern, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, right. You knew it was Margaret?
And, and son, too.
Okay.
But I was thinking of a man, I thought, something, I thought, Margaret Kern, yes, and I knew she was a law school.
Well, I, I have never been fooled by anybody in my life, but he said, I, see, his cousin, first cousin was a preacher back there, one of my friends, uh, was the Kern in New Ricker, and, um, so him and I was, he would ask me, Rick, and I said, you seen Sam, you talked to Sam lately, and I would say the same thing, and, uh, his name was Cam, and we called him Cam. Cam called me up one morning, almost crying, he might have been out of him, he said, oh, you heard about Sam? I said, I don't know, he's big, you know, he said, they're going to indict him tomorrow. I said, they're going to, they were done, there's going to be indicted, Sam and Kern? He said, yeah, I said, uh, I, I said, I don't want you to be the first member, whatever you think. And so, that, and he was sort of, see, Sam was sort of up there at the box with Eric, and Eric really was, you know, he was sort of the family hero, because him was this family, not necessarily prominent family, but this guy coming off the law school and becoming all these things, and all of a sudden gets indicted, and that's a, it's a shock to me. It'd be this much a shock if somebody told me that Hillary Phillips had been indicted, sent him off to jail, I said, he got the job wrong, Hillary Phillips.
Well, thank you for your, um, comments, and.
I know you're getting down, be talking, I don't know.
Well, we have, you have a.
I smell my aunt.
A little bit of your aunt, but we also have attorney coming in too.
Right, yeah, well, I can.
I appreciate you coming and making your comments too, because I have to be honest, I've had a phone call on the same subject, and I appreciate you bringing them up.
We all just say, oh, I'll be back next year.
Okay.
I'll be back, thank you. I had to make it all the same way, so I see the four generation of Lotters.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, uh, and our citizens' comments, here, seeing none, um, we'll start at the end of the table, uh, and I guess, remember the comments, uh, we do have, uh, the extension is providing so much value, and we are, it also.
Well, it's a pleasure, uh, to have had the comments, the citizens' comments, and ones that have been present for, for our meeting, and, uh, and assisted us to, to look at the facts that they presented to us, and to make decisions in such directions. Thank you again for being part of Gates County. It's only you, boy, the audience, appreciate you staying, and I, again, appreciate the work you do, and the work you help and guide other people to do, people that are not part of the volunteering system, don't realize what you go through, and I really appreciate every effort that you make.
All right, I do too, thank everyone that was here, who, uh, participated today, thank you again, uh, and I thank the citizens of Gates County for allowing me to, to serve you, and try to do what is best for the county. I keep in mind that we're elected officials, I was elected to do a job for the county, and that's what I intend to do, to continue to do, for the best of all the citizens of the county. I appreciate, uh, support you've given me over the years, and, and I will continue to try to do the best I can for the county, uh, not for individual interests, but for all the people of the county, so I thank you, and I, I will continue to do my best. Thank everyone for the participation today. And, of course.
Also, I'd like to thank everyone who came and those who were watching, hopefully you see that we try to really question and get the information we need to make, um, hopefully the last decision for the county. We appreciate all our employees, we appreciate our citizens, and we're always trying to do the best for them, and remember, we have citizens in the county too, and we want the best for all everyone. So thank you, and, uh, we will, no, do we need to go to the closed section? Will you make a motion to go to closed session?
I will move that we go to closed session.
As pursuant to North Carolina, standing one four three, desk three one eight, all right.
Now, second, motion, my girl.
Okay, motion's been made, and second, we go to closed session, all those in focus, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we adjourn, I guess, to the bathroom, recess, we go back. Second, I'm going to go back, including, uh, closed session.
So, who, second?
Motion's been made, second, all those in focus, say aye?
Aye.
All, okay, we are closed session, um, Commissioner Owens, can you have a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I have moved that we instruct our attorney, uh, to respond to each of the preliminary weather concerning our, uh, software issues.
Okay, and do that's in form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second?
Sure. Sure.
Motion is then seconded, in discussion, hearing none, all those say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, I'll check on the motion to recess to, they're worried that fifteen at four o'clock, and that would be in four hours?
No, I think it's over here, Melissa, it's at the meeting over here, on the four, on fifteen.
Okay.
We've got a district court on the fifteen.
Okay, that will be here on fifteen.
Move second.
Okay, motion is then seconded, all those say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed.